Now, just to get started, since this is not a committee meeting, this is a board meeting. We will open our board meeting with the standard legislature's flag. If they would like, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Robert, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Duddy.
Here.
Mr. Hogan.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Depp.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Ms. Hurd.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Simpson. Mr. Williams.
Ms. Simpson and Mr. Williams both contacted and had other commitments they are to choose for today's meeting. We do have a forum. Before turning it over to Mark to introduce our guest, I'd like to set down just a couple of ground rules. We have a tremendous long agenda today, a lot of material to cover, and in discussion we thought it would be better if we limited questions to clarification of a recommendation. I fear that if we get into lengthy discussions about the pros and cons of recommendations, I'm not so sure this is the format to do that. That will come down the pike at various different meetings we have, particularly our monthly committee meetings. So, I say again, when you have something, you're not clear on what your recommendation is, what it means, by all means, speak up. If you say, "I don't think this is a good recommendation," or "Why we wouldn't want to do that," say again, "I don't think that's a place for it. We'd be here all day. We'd be sitting out for dinner tonight." So, if those ground rules, Mark, if you could introduce our guest, let me start.
Happy to do it. As you know, last year, our staff recommended to the board that we embark on a 20-year plan to take a look at where we think we should be as an organization in the future and the factors that would be associated with that. How's our community expected to grow and how should we change, if at all, to address what we see happening in the community? With that, we engaged the firm Parsons Sprinkerhoff, and they, in turn, engaged a number of subcontractors to get this work done. And I'm going to turn it over to Frank briefly to just tee up where we're at in the process and then introduce the team.
I'm looking at the front of the formal leader, who's Tim here. Good morning, everyone. As you know, Parsons Sprinkerhoff has been our contractor, and they've spent quite a bit of time, not only working with our RTA staff, but we've had our public outreach meetings, contacts with the community via our website, to gather feedback as well from the community on the service recommendations. And Tim Reynolds is the project manager. We've worked with Tim before on some various projects, and I'd like to introduce him so he can introduce the team and then begin their presentation to the group.
Thank you, Frank, and good morning, everyone. Very much appreciate the opportunity to present today and to have worked on this project for Dayton RTA. We have a great team. Let me start the PowerPoint presentation with us today. But first of all, the agenda, you have it in front of you. We're going to spend a little bit of time going over the service concepts. We have presented those to you, the board, here a couple of months ago. They've been refined slightly based upon the input and the feedback that we've received since then. And we'll be talking about the strengths, weaknesses, challenges, and opportunities. Again, it's something that we've talked about in the past. We want to go through those again very briefly. The overview of the plan, but then we start getting a little more in-depth of some of the items that the board has not seen that we've recently completed, one of which is the State of Good Repair. In other words, that's an analysis of RTA's operating, maintenance, and passenger facilities. We have done a lot of work on the coordination efforts and ideas between public transit RTA services and the array of human-service transportation that is out there in the Dayton region. We've done a very thorough economic and financial analysis that we'll spend quite a bit of time on, as well as some research in terms of what the attitudes of the community are toward transit in the future. Our team comprised of, obviously, Parsons Sprinkerhoff. One of our primary subcontractors is HDR Decision Economics. VJ Parenter is here from Washington DC. We're going to try to keep the lights on for this presentation. We need them off to see better, but VJ's flight from Washington was canceled. He couldn't get any flights at all last night, I guess, to storms here in the Midwest, so he drove and got here at 8:00 this morning from DC. So, if we do turn the lights on, check them, you know. But a little bit closer to home, Charlie Nelson with Nelson Development Limited. Charlie's based in Akron, got in last night, which was a wise move, I suppose. Not here is Engage Public Affairs. They're Columbus-based. They work on our community and public outreach efforts. Burgess and Burgess, who are here, Bill Burgess and Ellen Belcher are here from Cleveland area and also representing some of the, we're sort of working with Tri-End Research Group, which did a lot of the detailed surveys. So, we compiled a great team that has done some great work, and the individuals here will be talking about their particular tasks. In terms of outreach, we did a number of stakeholder interviews, planners, community officials, representatives from transportation agencies beyond Dayton area, quite an array of folks that either provide, deal with, or touch public transportation in one way or another. We had the website active in terms of people having the ability to comment and provide their input through the website. We had a public open house a couple of months ago at the convention center. We were there all day at a series of meetings in which we invited the public to come, listen to what the concepts were, and provide their input, as well as a special human-service transportation workshop that Charlie Nelson ran a couple of months ago. We held that at Singletary Community College. They're all very successful activities. A little bit in terms of what we found, I mean, we were able to compile a great deal of data, whether it was outside of the agency or from RTA. And at this point, I would just like to take a second to say a special thanks to Frank and his team in terms of them providing us with information, responding to our requests, turning requests around within 12 or 24 hours at the absolute maximum. It has been, as always, a pleasure to work with Frank and Mark and the team and our team, which is a very upbeat and hard-working group of people. They impressed us, I think, more than maybe we impressed them. But in terms of, you know, some of the ingredients that we looked at, you know, obviously, ridership is one of the key in terms of where ridership is strong, where it is weak, what times of day is it strong and where is it less strong. Then, in terms of, well, then, ridership is one thing, but how productive are those lines are? And what we discovered was that, particularly relative to most of the transit systems of similar size, especially those in Ohio, using Akron, for an example, which is sort of the Cleveland version of Dayton out in that area, similar size, similar type of city, significantly more productivity in this system than we'd find in Akron or some of the other systems in Ohio. We looked at a lot of demographics, income, where incomes were high, where incomes were low, households in terms of how many cars do they have, which kind of gets you, gives us an indication of, well, what might be the use, as well as the possible use of public transportation in portions of the community. Where the minority population is, as we showed this last time, is a very striking demographic map that indicates that the minority population is very much concentrated on the west side. On the other hand, we look at where the jobs are, which tend to be, at least where the growth in jobs are, tends to be to the south and to the east side, a little bit to the north. And as well as senior population. What this kind of gets sensitized into is what we call a Transit Propensity Score. So, in terms of where trips would be generated, we took all those factors and other factors as well, demographic factors, and they gave us a sense of where transit in terms of generating trips might be more successful, might be already currently successful, as well as what are the areas, and they tend to be very job-focused, that tend to attract transit. So, these are a lot of the ingredients that guided us on the planning effort to come up with service concepts for the next 20 years. The service plan is not a COA, Comprehensive Operational Analysis. It's not a right turn, left turn implemented in the next six months with a public hearing type of thing. These are a series of concepts that the RTA would, should choose to implement, refine, obviously, work on schedules, and go out to the community in a very detailed way. But we were charged with providing that sense of direction in terms of what makes sense in this area, in terms of where the growth is, with the intent of, let's make sure that RTA remains relevant and is increasingly relevant as a service within the Dayton community. Another ingredient is commuter patterns. We've looked at all zones, and so we broke down Montgomery County and beyond into some travel zones and got a very strong sense of what parts, where people go from different parts of the area. All these sort of led to was a, an idea of what are the strengths, weaknesses, challenges, and opportunities that face RTA, and we have presented these to the board previously. But to summarize them, in terms of the system itself, a lot of systems are sort of a one-size-fits-all type of thing. Local service, maybe some express service. Obviously, everyone has to operate demand response service for persons with disabilities who cannot use fixed route service. But RTA, over in the last 10 years or so, has taken a couple of extra steps to provide a different types of service, whether they're circulator routes at the tail end of some of the lines, such as down in the south area, the Dayton Mall area, or a network of crosstown that link the transit centers throughout the area. And those routes, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, before you get too far, the first slide, you said you looked at where people go.
Yes.
Was that by RTA or by any means?
That's by any means, yeah. The majority of routes, including the crosstowns, and this was a bit of a surprise to us because crosstowns tend to be out there in the transit industry among the weaker type of lines. They don't tend to have the big generators along the line. But relative to the Dayton area, its crosstown network does fairly well. You won't find crosstowns when you rank, this is the most productive route to the least productive route, at the bottom. They're right in the middle, which is very healthy for a crosstown. The trolley wire provides a unique and a very strong presence for transit out within the Dayton area. University of Dayton, in terms of when we look at what's going on in the community, is a big factor in terms of the urban core, and not only investing within its campus, but now in the last several years, investing in the area outside of its campus, which does kind of lead into some opportunities for transit. And the fact that Sinclair is very stable, they have some long-range plans for growth, nothing imminent, but some ideas for long-range growth. But the fact that they're right here in downtown Dayton, and of course, Wright State, which has been in a growth mode, I mean, it kind of comes and goes depending on funding, but a very strong presence out in the northeast corner of the area. The Air Force Base, I mean, it's the second-largest employment, in fact, it's exceeded now downtown. The Air Force Base and its surrounding Fairborn, Beaver Creek area, Fairfield Mall area, has as many jobs as downtown Dayton does right now. You know, a little tenuous with sequestration, but still, a major presence in this area and provides some opportunities. The medical industry is a very big strength in the area, and the fact that Dayton is located at the crossroads of the major east-west highway, which VJ drove on for several hours last night, I-70, and then the one that I drove on for a much shorter period of time, I-75, but it's a national crossroads which has started to greater capitalize on. Weaknesses, well, there's strengths, you know, and there's weaknesses as well. Obviously, not all routes reach some of the areas that people tend to go by other means to or would like to go, particularly to some of the job sites. And a lot of those job sites are located outside of Montgomery County, particularly to the east in Greene County, to a lesser extent within the county down to the Austin-Landing area, where there's a little bit of service now, and again, to a lesser extent toward the north, heading toward Van Daley, the airport area. Weak corridor identity, what do we mean by that? Is that in some cases, you'll have a one main street, but there'll be a series of different routes that serve different segments. That's not endemic system-wide, but here and there, it's very difficult to identify which bus runs on which street. And folks want to know, well, if it's going to run on X-street, then it's going to go down the entire lane. It's not always possible to do that always, but we thought that there might be some ability to do a little bit more route redesign to make the services relate more to the street on which they operate. Downtown, we know what's been going on in the last several years, is that it's been on the weak side right now. It's probably been stabilized for the most recent moment, but that has been sort of a big disappointment, I think, for everyone in the community in terms of the job loss and retail loss downtown, which really affects transit, because a lot of people who are employed, who ride transit, are not necessarily at the top floor of an office building, but they're the folks who do back-office functions or cleaning at night and such. And when those jobs go, they tend to be the ones that go first. That has an impact on the transit system. Obviously, we're very familiar with the loss of manufacturing, what's been going on, what had gone on with GM. We noticed a lot of overbuilt retail. There's a lot of empty and abandoned retail in this area. Sprawl development, not unique to Dayton, very difficult to serve by transit, and that trend does not seem to be abating much. There's a few little bright spots where, say, a mire will provide you a shelter, will help you maintain that, will provide a sidewalk connection or a decent walking connection with the bus stop to the store, to the parking lot. But for the most part, when you have new developments that are built exclusively for the autumn and not pedestrian-oriented, that makes it difficult for transit to serve those areas, because transit requires a pedestrian-friendly environment. There has to be sidewalks. Distances need to be fairly close for people to utilize transit. The Air Force Base I talked about is being a big asset, a big employment site. By its nature, though, given securities, that it's a difficult place to serve. It's spread out into two main areas. There's only a few gates to get in. And again, as I mentioned earlier, that there's some development that would be attractive to transit riders, but it's outside RTA's jurisdiction. So, in terms of the challenges, obviously, we're all familiar with that. Financially, the system is supported by Montgomery County, used by more people than those in Montgomery County. New development trends tend to be scattered. I was talking about the sprawl. We have population loss, you know, the trends are still out there, not as dire as they have been in the last 10 or 20 years, but there are still some trends in terms of loss, some of the projections out there. Downtown, we would all admit, is still on the struggling side. The west side, very little signs of growth on the west side, which really has an effect in terms of where transit needs to be and the fact that there are folks out there that no longer have jobs in their neighborhoods to access to. Growth potential hits the Greene County line in terms of where RTA is able to serve, but the growth continues at least at that point. Super block, that relates to sprawl, and we have big mega areas with parking lots. Again, that makes it difficult for transit to serve. And I think one of the challenges is that we're becoming one big urban area between where I live, in the Cincinnati area, and Dayton. So, looking at some of the communities along the way, Middletown, Franklin, the Owl Mall, going south, those are some of the challenges as travel continues to be more in both directions in those two communities, cities being linked. Finally, we end up with some opportunities. The dual-mode bus program that RTA is starting to undertake with some of the test buses will provide, if successful, a great opportunity to reinvigorate the system, to effectively utilize the big investment that RTA has in the trolley wire infrastructure and everything that goes with that, but also will allow it to extend, as you all know, those buses beyond where the wire goes, to provide some of those simple, easy-to-understand lines to destinations that are beyond where the wire goes. There is some new life in the central city. Tech Town is one area that we wanted to make sure that we do serve within the plan. The fact that Dayton, University of Dayton, I just think there's a typo there, taking over NCR, you know, it's no longer an abandoned, empty site, that there's some signs of life there, and in the surrounding area with the new development, the prospective Racino at the GM site, a lot of new developments still within the county, Austin-Landing area and the 75 South corridor. And then just outside our area, but in areas where RTA currently serves, there's a lot of development and a lot of opportunity, we believe, in the Wright State, Fairfield Mall, Fairborn area. And then finally, you know, RTA provided us with a lot of information on prospective new developments within the area, and it appears that the most promising one is Cornerstone, which will be in the southeast corner of the area, and that will provide a good opportunity to have a potential transit anchor in that part of the community. Are there any questions at this point in terms of what we saw before I get into the service plan very briefly? Again, we had seen that a few months ago, but I want to go over what that concept is. Again, please don't hesitate to interrupt questions. If we wait to the end for questions, we're going to forget what I'm talking about now in the next hour or so. So, again, at any time, please raise your hand. What we found is that there are always room for opportunities. There's always room for tweaking and modifying the system. RTA does a tremendously effective job at monitoring what's going on, what are some of the new developments, and has its ears to the ground, its feet on the ground, to respond to all the various changes. And these are changes that are so nuanced that, as consultants from the outside, we would not have ever been able to pick up on without the help of Frank, Michelle Conley, and others at RTA to point us in the direction that, you know, there's a parking complex here that's set back. You wouldn't know if, you know, but people do walk down the hill, things like that, is that, you know, there's a lot going on that RTA has been responding to. Sometimes that comes a little price of, well, we're going to divert this here, we're going to twist this here, because, you know, you really do want to serve some of those new developments, but we want to make sure that the routes are kept simple, clean, easy to understand for the vast majority of riders out there. We're really focused on what we call focus quarters. The idea that RTA obviously has to serve Montgomery County, has that obligation, but there are some major corridors in this area where resources can't be focused on with very simple, straightforward, high-frequency service. I'll get into what those are in a moment. Again, I mentioned the opportunity that the dual buses provide. Those would be, for the most part, used on the focus quarters that I'll describe, which will help improve the identity of those corridors that folks will know, you know, this is a transit line here. And then, in terms of the long range, what are some of the regional connections that might show promise over the long haul within the next 20 years? A few network improvements, we'll go through them briefly. A few extensions, Gettysburg to the VA Hospital, 19 South out to the Austin-Landing area, 7S out to Research Parkway, some modifications to the crosstown, but the most significant, and that's that green line up there heading for the orange, and that's the extension of one of the crosstown lines in the area that provide an opportunity for folks living, whether it's in the Salem Road corridor or the 75 North corridor, cutting across the lower end of Huber Heights, and taking folks, without having to go downtown and make a transfer, out to the job-rich and opportunity-rich area of Wright State University, the Air Force Base, Soi Medical Center, and the Fairfield Mall commercial area. That's where the action is. The folks up in that area there have to go downtown to make that transfer. So, where we were able to provide what we would call a one-seat ride is something that we tried to focus on. Now, the system has a great network of transit centers which are designed to facilitate transferring. And again, RTA does a great job of working on the schedules so people don't have to wail on to make those scheduled connections. But where we are able to provide a direct line from an area that needs access to jobs to where those jobs are, we felt that the Route 34 extension out to that area to the northeast provides that opportunity. So, what are the focus quarters that I talked about? We decided to color-code them, and that might be an opportunity, marketing opportunity or identification opportunity for RTA in the future as these corridors get developed. In red, the Third Street quarter going through downtown, extending service from West Town directly to the VA Hospital. Again, the dual-mode buses will provide that excellent opportunity. And then heading east Third Street with some ideas, and I'll show a little close-up for a moment, of how to serve the Wright State and the Air Force Base area. North Main in blue, the Wilmington Pike Quarter in yellow. We have what we call a green line, Brown and Dorothy Quarter, that will provide a direct connection from downtown to University of Dayton, to Dorothy Lane, and the retail opportunities ending at the area of the Green Shopping Center, which is a demand area for students at University of Dayton. And then the orange line, Salem Road Quarter, with every other trip in the future extending out to Englewood, to the Walmart, to the Career Development Center. So, the idea of having these five color-coded lines, red, blue, orange, green, and yellow, provides an opportunity, this is where we are recommending that the RTA head toward consistent weekday 15-minute service. Not necessarily can be done automatically now, and in some cases, RTA is there now, but these would be very simple, very easy to understand, very convenient lines running back and forth where, at least on weekdays, you don't necessarily need that timetable that a lot of people struggle with, that, okay, if I just miss my bus, in 15 minutes, another bus will be coming. Just to zero in briefly in terms of what we're talking about on the northeast area, here's some, we're dealing with Wright State University, part of the Air Force Base, is that this is that red line coming in on East Third Street, which went toward the eastern end, would split so that every other trip would loop through Wright State University and come down National Road and serve the Air Force Base. And then every other trip would go down Pentagon Boulevard, serve the Fairfield Mall area, Soi Medical Center. So, 15-minute service out on East Third, and then once you get to National, this trip goes that way, the next trip goes that way, back and forth. Very easy to understand, provides a lot of good coverage, good convenient coverage to the activity centers, the opportunity areas, and job sites in that area. And earlier, I mentioned the Route 34 extension that's shown here in yellow, coming in through Riverside, serving Zink Road, which is loaded with apartments in that area, that have a very strong connection to the university, and then all continuing, providing that connection to Soi Medical Center and the Fairfield Mall area. And then again, I mentioned in the future, some regional connections, not just places like Austin Landing or the airport, but in the future, via the US-35 port from Xenia and Central State University into town, and perhaps even in the long range, going down to Cincinnati. They are not part of the financial plan that we'll be talking about in a few minutes. Those require working with other agencies, entities in the future to make them work, but we did identify that there was some demand and opportunities for those connections in the future. So, before I switch gears in terms of state-of-good repair and facilities, does anyone have any questions in terms of where we are with the service concepts? I know it's a lot to absorb in a short presentation.
Yes, sir. I may be out of line, but in your first part of the presentation, when you asked what questions, I didn't think of this. Much has been written in the national press about changes in demographics. Younger people not necessarily gravitating towards cars, moving to inner cities. Now, I have not seen statistics of whether that's true in Dayton, but you sort of see anecdotally the amount of people moving downtown, and the housing seems to be in a boom. Did you find that as being a change in demographics in this community? Is that an opportunity for us also?
It is an opportunity that we responded to with, let me head back a little bit.
I apologize.
No, no, no. The green line in particular was one that, that was on our mind, because downtown, and particularly a little bit on the east side, there's some renovation, there's some new condos, some loft apartments. There's the Oregon District, which is well-established. And then going down to the University of Dayton, where there's a lot of revitalization there, and you could just, you know, you can sense it, that that is not the end of it, that this momentum will continue. You know, there's the harbingers of new development, whether it's a coffee shop or whatever, and those are some of the first things that you tend to see in areas that are starting to redevelop. There's enormous potential in the area, a lot of streetscape improvements, which does provide RTA with, you know, an opportunity to work with the community and other entities in terms of streetscape improvements, consistent-looking shelters, and with the opportunity of the wire, there's a great opportunity to say, you know, you've got this green line, like if you're at University of Dayton or live in that area, that'll take you to downtown, that'll take you to UD, that'll take you out to Dorothy Lane, that'll take you out to the Green. So, that's one example of responding to, I think, that phenomenon that isn't, you know, a New York City-level phenomenon here in Dayton, but there is some evidence of that happen. Thank you. I wasn't the one who did state-of-good repair. I'm not a structural guy, but we had two folks from our Houston office who are in Facilities Division, Parsons Sprinkerhoff, and another gentleman from our Cincinnati office come up and spent a few days, and they were guided by folks at RTA's Maintenance Division, and we, again, we appreciate their assistance as well, and they were very responsive in terms of, here's plans, here's data and such, to take a look at what we call, and what the FTA talks about as state-of-good repair, a bit of a high-level audit in terms of the condition of RTA's facilities out there. FTA is really emphasizing in the last couple of years, and will continue to do so, maintenance of what they've helped invest in throughout the nation. So, this task helps respond to that. What we did was, we conducted what we call a Facility Condition Assessment Rating, and it's a scoring, and it wasn't done on just the entire building, but we looked at space by space, floor by floor, facility by facility, and took a look at what the conditions are, what the opportunities, potentially what some of the needs are in that area. And just to, very briefly, when we look at that scoring, an excellent, which is, you know, 4.4 and above, that would be a very new asset or a nearly new asset, that if there's any kind of issues, they're really minor and that they would be corrected in a short period of time through RTA's existing maintenance program. A good is something that's nearing its midlife, that, you know, it requires a little bit of work. There might be some temporary maintenance deferments. Adequate, there might be some moderate defects or deteriorating components in the area. They may affect a little bit in terms of the performance of the operation. There may be some more exten- be some more extended maintenance deferments in that area. And then we get down to marginal where there's an increasing number of defects, there may be some impacts in terms of the performance and the operations of the system. Poor is an asset simply that lasts its useful life. For the most part, our folks felt that RTA has, the word impressive was used a lot, that RTA has a very impressive capital infrastructure and a well-maintained capital infrastructure. The system has shrunk a little bit, given the budget situation for the last three to four years, so there may be some excess capacity in terms of the facilities, particularly within the Longworth Campus. But for the most part, our folks determined that RTA's facilities, whether they're passengers or operating and maintenance facilities, are well-maintained and well-utilized. The Longworth Campus just south of here where these offices were quite some time, Building 600, so I will go through, I'm going to briefly go through them one by one. 600 is the one that has, is the largest of facilities out in Longworth that has received a lot of attention in the last few years, a lot of maintenance, a lot of overhaul, particularly in the office space out there. And most of the areas were rated adequate to good and some excellent. So there's very little indication of any needs in this area. They would all be very minor in terms of wear and tear, maybe cracking tiles in the bathroom and such, but nothing of significance. 601, a little bit different in terms of, this is where Project Mobility is, for the most part, headquartered out of, it also contains, you know, the fitness facility at RTA. There's some upgrades needed for the parking area, some upgrades in terms of ventilation HVAC. RTA is in the process of replacing the bus washer, I believe, at this point, or has some plans. These are what our folks identified. 705 is considered to be an outdated building with a lot of physical issues. 901, somewhat problematic in that it's really marginally used by RTA, this is an excess type of facility that has the potential, if it's not already, of creating some headaches. RTA does not use much of the building right now, there are definitely some structural issues there, but what we understand is that RTA has been exploring options for its use or disposition. And then there are two smaller buildings at the south end of the campus that are in good shape, and they're primarily used to service the trolley bus infrastructure.
Just a reminder, 940, 40, that's the line chart.
We also took a look at this building right here, including this room, and, you know, this is a new rehab, almost a new construction, the transit center is near brand-new. Our folks went from floor to floor, including the vacant floors, went out onto the roof, and determined that, for the most part, as we say in Cincinnati, at 99 and 44 and 100% in great shape. There are a little bit of issues in terms of the basement that RTA has been looking at that relate to some of the access to utilities that come in via the side, that are underneath the sidewalk in the vault area, but they're in the process of being examined and corrected. And then there are a little bit of, and you're familiar with them, facade issues in terms of some of the direct decorative freezes and such, that from a look at, require a structural engineer to specifically analyze that. Shows some signs of some water and freeze thaw damage, nothing too severe, but that is one of the little things that they found related to Wright State. But overall, this building, as well as the transit center, are in very good shape. And the same is true for the peripheral transit centers. The Northwest Transit Center, obviously you're familiar with, has gone through a major rehab and renovation in the last couple of years as its functions have changed with gray hump coming in, so there are really no issues there. The primary issues in the rest of the transit systems are the HVAC systems, wall units used as air conditioners which need replacing, some, you know, minor bathroom issues, water fountain issues, and these are very small-scale, and a little bit of maybe concrete cracking which does happen here and there. So again, the facility scored very well, you know, there's a few maybe overrepat, some excess capacity on the Longworth Campus, but the report that we're providing you and that Frank has a draft of goes into space by space in great detail. So before we move on, are there any questions in terms of the state of good repair in facilities? This is at the point where I start turning the presentation over to some of the specialists that we had joining the team, and to discuss the process and some of the ideas regarding public transit and human services coordination, here Charlie Nelson from Nelson Development out of Akron, he'll take over the presentation.
Don't leave yet. Train, no, train me on the remote, refresh me.
This is, now, this is where I always say, if I had my six-year-old with me, that's to advance.
Okay, very good. Yeah, good. Yeah, my kids train me all the time or refresh my memory. Good morning.
Morning.
How is everybody?
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. We are, we took, alternative services, I kind of grabbed a number of things we were asked to look at, flexibility of services, including Project Mobility, and opportunities to work with other agencies in the region to improve the delivery of services. And I thought it might be good, we're shifting focus, just to review vision, mission, and the way RTA brands itself, it's time to ride. Premier public transportation provider, great valuable, dependable service, responsive, timely, accountable. And that, that holds for everything I'm talking about here, as well as, you know, your core One question is, who's involved in delivering services with GT-RTA right now? GT-RTA has very effective customer service capability, other RTAs are delivering services in surrounding areas, we talk with them about inter-county issues and opportunities. United Way operates an information and referral service. Miami Valley RTA has a resource directory, recently, Radshiner's website was developed, which Miami Valley RTA, Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission is managing, and there's an array of chemical service agencies that either need services very badly or are providing services for their clients. So in this area, we looked at three things. We looked at flexible routes, services that don't necessarily operate as, as Tim talked to Third Street all the time, they have the capability to move on and off of that. Some flexibility with Project Mobility services, and this is something that I think has some broad opportunities, but it takes, it would take RTA in some new directions. And the general category of mobility management, who needs to get around in the region, and how do they get around? Where are they successful, where do they, are they not so successful? And the concept of a one-call-one-click transportation center, and we'll talk quite a bit about that, but we did some analysis, we drew some conclusions and have some recommendations. They're all weaved into what we're going to talk about, but flexible route services many times connect people with nearby destinations. They're not easily reached necessarily on a fixed route, that may be in the neighborhood, but it's a little bit too far to walk to get to, a little bit too far to get to that destination, and some flexibility sometimes can, can help people make that connection. Areas beyond fixed route services, too far to walk, in areas beyond, outside that three-quarter mile zone that defines the area of Project Mobility. Areas of low population density, just doesn't make sense to put a fixed route bus there, there just aren't enough people. Areas of high business density, especially areas where that employment density is outside, again, that fixed route service area. Some examples, when we look at areas beyond the fixed route, that's a three-quarter mile band around RTA's fixed route network. So any of the areas outside of that area, is there a need in this pocket or that pocket to try to get some service to people and find flexible ways to doing it? It's not necessarily, how can we extend a route? How can we get some service into that area? This is the population density map that you saw, that Tim had. Look at this, with that dot-bash line, which represents the service area, most of the higher-density residential is pretty well within the service area, except where you get into some areas in Green County. That is not necessarily served terribly well, but those residential areas are obviously outside of Montgomery County and not a core, a core issue for RTA. This is a map that shows business densities, and what you want to look at here is those, those blue areas that are outside the fixed route service area. Where are there some opportunities that the fixed route doesn't get close enough to, and obviously you look at Fairborn, you look at Beaver Creek. Now, this is something that RTA should probably be concerned about, to the extent that Montgomery County people need to reach that, might be for shopping, but job development's probably the most important market to be looking at. Just to, to kind of zoom in, the airport area, a lot of the airport area is encompassed, but there are pockets in the airport area, so if you're extending service to the airport, as I understand it, there's a job access and recruiter's commute grant to try to reactivate that, well, maybe there's a need to, an opportunity to get some, get to some of those other areas. It's as if we're talking about targeted, targeted initiatives, not necessarily, well, how can we serve all of those with a single route? You wind up running all over the place and not doing a very good job for anybody. Fairborn, Beaver Creek, you start to see where some of those opportunities are that go on beyond the fixed route area, maybe you can extend the fixed route, maybe there's, maybe there's a different way to do it with some flexibility. And not a route that would necessarily start at, right, South Plaza. It could, could pick up in an area out there, could begin at one of your transit centers where people are able to make connections. Frank talks a lot, a lot about a one-seat ride, and that's really what you need to do, but for somebody who needs to get to a job out there, can't on a fixed route bus, doesn't make any sense to extend a route, a connection at a transit center may be very, very good for them. There's an area in the northeast Montgomery County that has about 20 collection of businesses, about 2,500 employees, it's a lot of employees. This is an example of where you might make a connection up in this area with a flexible route bus. Another way to do that would be to use a Project Mobility vehicle. RTA, and we'll talk about this in a minute, can start to use Project Mobility capability for non-ADA transportation. In many transit systems, it's kind of a revolutionary idea, but if you think about the capacity that you have there, it's, it's a very good resource, it fills a need, but boy, is it expensive. So if there are ways to get more people on those vehicles while they're out in service. Conclusions, trolley buses and fixed routes really cover the area of high population density pretty well, pretty well. Also, cover activity centers, employment locations well, with some exceptions, like we've talked about. Opportunities will arise in the future, we're going to talk about mobility management in a minute, and there are things that can happen in this region that we can't necessarily discover in a study like this, but if, if we move forward, if you move forward with mobility management and a transportation center, stuff will bubble through the surface. Project Mobility, door-to-door service, limited to people with disabilities in some transit systems around the, around the city, it's also open to older adults, to seniors. In most cases, where that service was in place before the Americans with disabilities that was passed. It's expensive, but it's critical, and the question that we are thinking through and in RTA needs to think through is, how can that capability be leveraged in a, in a broader context? Find ways to improve its performance. These are top destinations for Project Mobility. We've got Goodwill, Liberty Center, Monaco, I apologize for the clarity on this, Miami Valley Hospital, Rehabilitation Center. Take a look at how many people are going there, at what times of the day, and can some, can some things be done to perhaps boost the productivity? I know RTA has done a very, very good job in the last year or so of boosting the productivity of the Project Mobility by simply taking a look at how services are scheduled and how, how work is defined. Here's dialysis trips. This is a particularly challenging area, but there are a number of people in some areas that aren't going to the closest dialysis center, they're going across the county. Trips are typically scheduled in response to somebody being scheduled into a dialysis center, and GT-RTA has to solve the problem. With a focus on mobility management, it would get RTA into conversations at the front end before some critical decisions are made. Somebody takes a job outside the service area, then a social service agency comes in and says, can you help us get that person there? And it's a two-mile walk from the, from the closest bus stop, or it's, it's a, if you've got any flexibility, let's, let's kind of work together to make better decisions. Here's the, the United Rehabilitation Center up here, and where people are coming from. Are there ways to collect people on a vehicle? Might be a flexible route rather than a series of Project Mobility vehicles making individual pickups. That's a location where you probably have a number of people moving at the same time, so you may be able to, to move them differently. This shows the, the lighter band shows the three-quarter mile limit, the narrow band shows a quarter mile. And the significance of this, and those are, the blue dots are Project Mobility people that use service this year, as of a couple of months ago. The significance of it is about 82 or 83% of those Project Mobility riders are within a quarter mile of a bus stop. That's like walking from here to the elevator, not quite, but very, very close, very, very close. Now, are there, are there ways that we can help those people use fixed route service? Not all of them, obviously, but there are some, there bound to be some who can. We'll talk about travel training a little bit later. How can we help people understand the system, train them to use the system so that they can do a better job for themselves? How can we leverage Project Mobility? Well, we, as we said, we can link with fixed route service to get to locations outside that service area. If, if we've got a vehicle in the northern part of the, part of the county on Project Mobility services, why don't you slip a trip in, or two trips in, to get up to an employment center? It might be an effective way, when you look at employment centers, how many work shifts are there? I mean, there can be a myriad of shifts, so it'd be very, very difficult to hit all of them with a fixed route bus, but with a Project Mobility vehicle, particularly where you're able to work with an employer, you can target it. You're not necessarily going to crush everybody with access, but you can pick out and do an effective job for some. Strategic partner collaborations, one of the agencies that you can work with effectively is, is the County Department of Job and Family Services. They're training people to, to, to work, giving them the skills they need, they're placing them in work locations to help them become job-ready, and then they come out the door and they need to get to, to work. Sometimes, and they have partners, employment partners around, around the county, so you bring RTA into the conversation and you can do a more effective job with, with that training and access to jobs. Again, and contracting with human service agencies, not necessarily to do their transportation, but in some cases it may make sense. RTA know, you know, we, we talked to strategic partners, we had a workshop back in March, and when you have these conversations, things start to happen. One agency came forward and said, you know, we'd really like to get out of the business of transportation, and our staff are talking with them now, and they may wind up contracting with RTA. Another example, oh, my memory. Another example, oh, my memory. Another agency that is very opportunistic and excited about this mobility management center is paying RTA to upgrade the training for their drivers. We had no clue on these before we started our discussions. So opportunities, opportunities come. There's no reason why project mobility needs to be restricted to providing service to people with disabilities within that three-quarter mile limit. That's the obligation from the ADA, coming from the federal Transit Administration that RTA has. Doors can be opened to people without disabilities who need rides. I apologize for the two extra letters there. But in many cases, it'll be targeted. In many cases, it'll happen in collaborative ways. RTA doesn't have to think about all of these. You sit down around the table with people, and these things come to the service. So we want to talk about this concept of a transportation resource call center. I was part of the consulting team that developed a coordination plan back in '07, and it was recently updated by the MAP Miami Valley RPC. And one of the undone initiatives was this idea of mobility management and a call center. A number of initiatives have started over the last four or five years, but this notion of bringing all the resources together hasn't happened. It's a very difficult thing to do. We've got United Way, we've got those ride finders. But going forward, the vision is, we've got agencies with needs, we've got people with needs that aren't necessarily being adequately met. There are solutions. GDPRTA's fixed route and trolley bus service is the best core resource in the region, and that should be the default solution. Because, as you know, there are seats on those buses for people to fill. But you've got other agencies and private companies that have the ability to do more with their resources than what they are doing. I like to describe it, the key is you've got customers. You see a guy with a money bag, these are your taxpayers, and there's state government and federal government, federal Transit Administration. They have resources to bring to the table. You've got to serve customers, you've got to pay attention to who is providing funding resources to you. But you've got to do it together, you've got to reach consensus, you've got to do sound analysis. But if you don't have leadership, it's very, very difficult for that to happen. Such a center would maximize the use of RTA services themselves, improve the effectiveness of project mobility, expand telephone access, and bring technology up to speed so that you have web access, so that people can get better information, better access to information via the web, are able to schedule services on the web. With the Veterans Transportation Community Living Initiative project that RTA received, one of about 100 competitively across the country, and kudos for getting that. There are only five in Ohio. So that was very, very good. Interestingly, it's supposed to improve transportation services for veterans, but there's not a dime of money to run a bus. It's all technology. But that grant here will do an effective job of bringing that technology, adding that technology to what RTA already has in place. And it'll do it in a way that we can bring other agencies to the table to use, to share in that technology. The Fed said, "Here's a bunch of money for technology." Oh, by the way, we want you to set up a one-call employment transportation center. No money to do it, but it's a good incentive. Frankly, I'm glad they did it. I'm involved with several other systems in the state who are doing this as well. But it enables other providers to join the trip scheduling dispatching system so that it's broad beyond just project mobility riders with on-vehicle mobile data terminals. These are terminals which send trips out to vehicles, to drivers. Go here, go there. If you need to know how to get there, there's GPS on it. It's like I call Mrs. Garmen is there to help. And integrate some fare payment capabilities through the technology. Key things to look at: Who are the strategic partners that you want to bring to the table? And an important thing there is, you've got the larger agencies, you've got smaller agencies. You don't have to get everybody to the table right away. Get some key, the important thing is to get some key partners together and get started. Other agencies that may not be ready at the start will say, "Gee, I like what's going on. Can I get in?" The door needs to be open. But it takes formalized agreements. This is not handshake stuff at all. Technology, travel training, helping agencies and people understand what's going on. What I call broad and deep customer service. It's all about customers and keeping them happy and putting the organization together. You don't want it in place, we've talked about that. Use RTA's technology, but be comprehensive, be open. Agencies need access, agencies are able to offer services. Create the environment where they can do that. There's some agencies around there who want, as I said earlier, want to get out of the business of transportation. Extend that technology to strategic partners. But there's a lot of focus on technology. Remember, not everybody gets access to a smartphone. There are a lot of people who just need to pick up the phone and call, and the only place they can get on the net is the public library. You've got to keep that in mind. Can't leave those people behind. Partnership agreements define the nature of the participation. Duties and responsibilities: What are you going to do? What is the agency going to do? What is RTA going to do? It's got to be clear. And there are costs. This is not cheap. But agencies have access to funding. They're spending money now. We're creating an environment where they may very well choose to spend that money differently in a way that it could support such a center. They're getting a value when they come to the table, and they need to put money on the table. Educate agency staff so they can educate their clients. Educate riders directly. A travel training program, I think, can have untold benefits, both to the agencies, to clients, to existing riders. There are a couple of agencies that are doing travel training, need to put a collaborative program together, but as I see it, RTA starts a robust travel training program. That means you hire staff to do it. There are grants available to support it, but I think it makes sense. Private services. Agencies will bring their money to the table, whether it's from state government, from federal government, Medicaid funding, the funding that comes into Job and Family Services. The DD Board gets several streams of money. An interesting thing with the DD Board is they're training kids in high school. They're into high schools, they graduate. What happens? Train them so that they can understand RTA's transit system and go into the workforce. MAP 21, you've heard of that, and agency funding sources. With MAP 21, Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and RTA have much more flexibility than we've had before. And I think that will pay dividends in support of the movement forward on this program. Just a stab at an organizational structure. The call center is at the center. The call center, this is, should be, the GDPRTA initiative. They're in the best position to provide that leadership and pulling agencies together. You've got people who then met needs, and a host of human service agencies that want to see people travel better. You bring them to the table. Providers of service, the core is GDPRTA's fixed route service plus project mobility. You've got taxi services, other private companies, human service agencies, volunteers. Think about ride sharing in some of the bigger cities across the country, where you pick up, there are apps where you can say, "I need a ride from the White House out to the Kennedy Center." Folks who have that app get a message, "Yeah, I'll take you." There's a cost arrangement. That's a technology that could be built into this center very, very easily. Number of functional areas, I won't go through the details here, but there are a number of things that need to be done to bring this all together. How's your speed reading? We'll talk about that later. What I wanted to do is just get to this. There are a number of things. You've got to create and launch an internal management team. Actually, there's a group already meeting here within RTA that is focused on this, and you've got to have that internally. You've got to mobilize stakeholders. We had good discussions with them, a good workshop, but you've got to bring them together, a lot of one-on-one stuff, some group meetings, and work out those partnership agreements. Who's interested? You ready to come to the table? Eh, not sure. Okay. We'll talk to you later. It's okay. But those who are, you find out what their needs are, what they could do, and you put it in writing. The IT is key. This system is not going to work effectively without the IT in place. You can do something. You can do something. I saw a center in Portage County back in 1994. It wasn't nearly as big and as complex as this, but it can be done. But you've got to formalize an educational structure, and obviously, you get to implementation. Whether that schedule is realistic or not, you know, when I look at an implementation side, I look at some of the staff, like, is this smoking goat? Baby.
Charlie, I think the dates are a little off, but if we kind of just click a year, it's probably where we are.
It might be, yeah. I mean, you've got to move aggressively, but you've got to be ready to roll out the services and...
So, Charlie, move aggressively, then it's really March of 2014 that this, in theory, could be implemented.
In theory, I think it could be done in 18 months.
Okay.
I really do. Oh, 14, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
This is, yeah, this is aggressive. Yeah, I mean, you know, what did I hear the other day? Something like, where do you want to, who do you want to ship something that should have arrived yesterday? So I apologize for that, but yeah, it is 2014. Anyway, I think there are opportunities in this arena that will put RTA in a different place, a broader role in assuring effective transportation services in the region.
So, you know, this was one of the major tasks that RTA staff asked us to focus in on. We want to make sure that we got it, and if we're, you know, where we are in terms of, is this something that makes sense for the agency to start pursuing? So does anyone have any questions of Charlie on this aspect of the project? Interesting concept that still needs a lot of work, obviously, to implement, but it's trying to get the arms around the fact that there's more money spent on human service transportation than there is in public transportation with not a ton of accountability in sense of that, is it being effectively used? And this is heading in the direction of trying to get everyone's arms around that, that it be more effectively used in terms of financially, as well as to provide better service for folks who have transportation needs in the area.
Have any transit authorities in Ohio either installed call centers or in the process of installing call centers?
Canton's in the process. Youngstown is in the process, and those are driven by this Veterans Transportation Project. It sets the table to do that. Cleveland, a number of years ago, set a capability in place that just deals with older adults. Outside, basically, I think what RTA and Cleveland was trying to do was solve that senior transportation problem without having to give seniors access to their ADA transportation services. They wanted it segregated, so it wasn't bringing people together so much to meet a broader array of needs. It was, gee, let's bring a few people together and see if they want to start something and solve a problem for us. Part of Portage County has been doing some things. That's where I started that system 20 years ago, and they're kind of picking on it. But those are the ones that I'm familiar with. It takes, I'll tell you, it's a risky thing, and, you know, Mark told us early on, "Help us understand it. We like to take a serious look at doing this. Maybe we need to take that leadership role in the region."
This is a minor question, but the use of technology and the adoption of even more technology, we're clearly in a mode of doing that within the RTA. Yesterday, in the Wall Street Journal, there was an article about organizations, many of more sure, who are holders of a lot of patents and are bringing suits against regional transit authorities for infringements of patents as being a major problem. Have you experienced that where you've helped install this?
What I, no, no, because nobody's really opening that market here that I can see. Well, I did see, there is an agency in Southern California developing a travel training program, and I was out there back in February. They are using peer-to-peer media technology to train and track people, track their use. Okay, you've been trained, how you doing? But what, the area where there is some controversy is these apps, these apps that taxi companies are starting to say, "You're taking business away from me." It's happening in San Francisco. There was an article in, where did I see it? It was in New York Times, day before yesterday. I've got, yesterday's Wall Street Journal in my car, I haven't paced through it all yet, but I'll have to look through that. Yeah, it's, you know, it's virgin territory, so you're going to have those kinds of things. But as I'm looking at that in this context, it's, there's kind of a bubble around it. Because one of the things you worry about, you know, volunteer, I mean, I see that as perhaps a way to do some volunteer transportation. Red Cross has done a very good job of it over the years, but you've got to have standards, safety standards, vehicle standards, training standards, so on and so forth. And would you want your mother climbing into any car that came up to the curb? So if you've got the right kind of structure, I think that system perhaps has an application. But it's people who are already registered, so that if something's thrown out for service, it goes to a limited set of people, a G-PH, for example. And there you not take question.
Another question is, Jones.
Wait, I touched on it, but the travel training program?
Yes.
That's for the employees or?
No, it's for riders.
For riders.
It's to help people understand how to use the service. Typically, probably the best way to do that is you've got some people on staff, and you go out to senior centers, for example, or you go to the United Rehabilitation Center, and you make a presentation to groups, and you find out to what extent people are interested. Or anybody who comes in here to register for project mobility. I would say, "You know, we can train you to use our fixed route service. Would you like to do that?" Wouldn't necessarily mean they can't use project mobility, but it can help them. Maybe you find a trip or two that they can make on the bus and use project mobility for others. One of the things systems around the country, you have, you do free pass?
We do. In fact, I was going to mention, this would be like what we do with Scott, he's put on sterile, to a different level, and then we do free rides on fixed route.
That has, that's got huge benefits, the free pass. You know, you're giving them a seat that nobody else is in anyway. I think it's a powerful way to help them. It's also a way to thank.
It's probably, what I'm gathering from the analysis, is taking it to a much more personal level when you start identifying exactly where people are, where their typical trips are.
That's right.
And then, you know, Scott is a part-time independent contractor. We would probably need to dedicate more resources.
Yeah, absolutely. And one area where that has particular relevance is these school kids, the mentally disabled students who are transitioning out of high school. You worked with them in high school before they graduated, and they're much better prepared to go out into the real world as a parent.
Are there any other questions of Charlie on the public transit, human service, transportation coordination aspect of the project?
I'll be around that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe we ought to take just a second.
All right.
Ten minutes.
Okay. Now, I don't think anyone really needs to answer.
Get back to order here.
Why don't we introduce DJ Perimchery from HCU Decision Economics? Really, what's the vibe?
Really, what's the bottom line of all this? Vijay was tasked with doing the economic analysis and the financial analysis and financial plan for the project, so he's here to present and to answer whatever questions you have. Thanks, Vijay.
Thank you. So, so, it's polyclass position. Financial analysis and economic analysis are hardly sort of separate because of the fundamental finance of polyclass position is basically just about through the economic impact that it has. So, which is why we put the economic analysis and financial analysis together. The basic approach that we took here is sort of looking at a macro view of the area. And in terms of, you know, sometimes a macroscopic analysis, essentially looking at the minutes from Ohio, has an advantage of not, as, you know, they call it the Washington, the capitalist way, economist hubris, that they always think the macro view is the right view because when you are down the place, you feel the pain, the stress, and the joys, and then you don't have an overall of views opportunity. So, we said, okay, let's take a macroscopic view of the thing. See what is happening to the area, what has happened, what is happening, and what is expected to happen, and let's look at how that is going to happen from an economic standpoint, how it's going to impact transportation infrastructure, what are the implications in terms of transportation infrastructure, particularly public transportation. Let's see how it plays in that. Then we said, okay, that's a macroeconomic, economist viewpoint. Then we took a performance analyst viewpoint, said, if that is the opportunity, let's look at the system today and see how is the system doing compared to the other systems, sort of similar systems, in terms of performance, and saying, are there gaps? Are there, you know, opportunities to improvement or any of those things? So, essentially, understanding where the thing is today and what needs to be done. Then we took the next step, which is a planning viewpoint, which is essentially looking at the future plans and saying, okay, so what does it actually do? Where does the system do today, and what does this future plan bring? And saying, in terms of service, in terms of providing access to people, how does it actually improve that? The fourth one is actually the accounting viewpoint, which is the bottom line. How is it, how much does it cost? If you do all that, how much does it cost? Now, cost part is one, and then the business case viewpoint, which is what does it bring us back? What is that revenue from? It's just off cash in terms of, here is a cost, what is the revenue from it? Now, obviously, the business case then brings up the gap. If there is a gap, then we take the microeconomic viewpoint, which is, so, why do we do that? If there is a gap, and we said, what are the actual economic impacts that this particular investment will do for the region? And that loops it back into macroeconomics, right? And then we say, okay, now, let's look at the different alternative financing models that have been used in other places in terms of filling this gap and see where it is, what are the things that we should actually consider? That's the way we have structured this analysis. So, I can make this a more of a discussion, which actually might be better than giving a talk. So, from a regional economic standpoint, this is, you know, you all know what happened in the 2008, nine times, when it is referred to as the Great Recession. Particularly, Ohio and Dayton suffered a lot, and Ohio and Dayton are not sort of alone. Many areas and many cities actually suffered a lot. In fact, the springback since 2009 has been pretty remarkable, particularly the state and the region as well. The GDP growth is what is shown here. Since 2009, 2010, 11, it is comparable to the US economy's growth, and there's been a lot of sort of inherited growth from national versus state growth, but it has basically improved that. Now, when you have a potential for economic growth in a region, or when there is a sort of a sense of a growth, what really helps is creating an environment from a policy and infrastructure standpoint that can bring in investment, that can bring in people. And so, it is an opportunity more than anything else. This is not something that you work with, but that essentially try to capitalize, right? Now, what does it actually mean for the transportation infrastructure? Not public transportation, but transportation as such, right? The economic growth is very, very dependent on transportation infrastructure. Reason is, transportation is actually the basic core of trade, and transportation infrastructure is extremely key, and maintaining a state of good repair is actually important. As the same, the investment, if you don't do an investment, it is not a status quo. It actually deteriorates. So, even keeping it at the same level requires work. I mean, that is one of the key elements of these long-term benefit cost analysis. Keeping something without improving is actually deteriorating it. And that is something that we have to keep in mind, that state of good repair is something which is, which is important to maintain. Now, the fact is, if you look at this chart, if you, if you look at this, I'm sorry. Here, in '08, so the unemployment rates were as low as 5% to 5.4%. Today, it has come down, and it is more in the 7.3% range. What it actually means is there is a latent employability. When we look at the other demographic trends, which I've seen, which are in the reports, the median age in the region, plus the sort of the people with skills, Department of Labor, people with skills, people with education, et cetera. It means that there's an employable population around it. And that means the reduction of unemployment, or more of employment is going to rise, and it is absolutely important. When, you know, unemployment rate, then it essentially goes down, who gets affected the most are the people who are probably most dependent on transit, on public transportation, which is why it is actually very important that public transportation play a sort of a capital role in this growth of economy. So, it is not as a response to the economic growth, it's more of triggering, extending economic growth. Now, the current coverage of, so, from there, we looked at, what's the current coverage of the RTA system, right? In the tri-county region, basically, RTA system, actually Montgomery and Green together. What we did was an analysis, which was based on sort of a GIS-based system, essentially saying how many people can access the transit within, outline, et cetera. And we found that around 75% of the people are actually taught. Montgomery County is more like 80%, but 75% of people can actually access transit. Now, this is weighted a little bit with a frequency of, so some of the routes where the frequency is very low, the accesses actually sort of scale it down when there is very low frequency. So, it's a frequency-based measure of accessibility. Now, then about in 2012, there were roughly 9.3 million trips. This is based on the P and L statements, some of the things about a number of transit trips and the National Transit Database, which has many of these reports. And thanks for trying, we got some information on the fare box revenues. The fare box revenues, which actually the National Transit Database had a slightly different number, but it's about a bucket look. That is what is the average fare, although the fares are 175, 150, with a lot of monthly passes and things to that show. So, the average fare per trip is around the top, a little north of the top. So, once we set up that system, we said, okay, let's compare it with other systems, which are sort of similar systems. What we did was to select from about 20 or 30 different transit systems. We used a sort of a peer group. We created a peer group based on similarity in terms of the population, the density of population, the low-income population that is served, the coverage that the system provides, et cetera. And we selected, you know, essentially these, the system, there are about eight, that we used to compare. How does RTA compare in terms of performance, in terms of fare box revenues and performance? So, here's a sort of a high-level view. There are a bunch of charts in the report. So, if you, I'm sorry. If you look at, the first thing is fare box, fare earnings. What we did was fare recovery per dollar of operating cost, right? This is, what we found was, the numbers are not very clear here, but the right one is RTA, and the others are the peer group. And Akron and Toledo, we just put it next to that, so an easy comparison of the neighbors. So, here, it shows around 20%. The reason is, you are probably more used to a 15% fare recovery. That's because what we have used is just the system performance efficiency, which is fully the operating cost. It doesn't include the administrative and the other costs in total. Just the operating cost, we say around 22% and for coverage. And the same with fare recovery per hour of service. So, per dollar of cost and per hour of service, which is how much do you actually get? And in fact, if you look at it, RTA, in terms of the per dollar, per operating cost, it's pretty high. It's among the better systems, whereas here, it's sort of, again, above average in terms of the revenue part of fare recovery per operation, as well as fare recovery per cost of operation. Now, the next is, this is actually not fare, this is operating cost. Oh, yeah, this is, I'm sorry, this is the next one, the cost performance. Well, they're too slightly, I don't know. So, here, it is about how we are managing the cost aspect of it. Early one was how do we recover the fares, right? Here it is, operating cost per revenue hour and operating cost per passenger trip. How do we compare with the rest? So, here you see, it's more, more of an average in both cases. The operating cost that we incur per revenue hour and per, it's kind of an average for that. So, overall, the system is, with its peer group, it's average. In some cases, it's more average. The reason why a peer group analysis is important is, are there sort of opportunities for increasing it? Are there opportunities, are we giving these to the people? I mean, that's the whole thing. If you are already on the high side, you probably cannot go much there because that's what the general trend in systems are. But if you're very low, there's an opportunity for improvement. Now, I said about the current performance, analysis of performance. Then we said, looking at the improvements that were actually proposed in the overall planning, the system improvements, we said, what does it actually do in terms of service to the people? So, one of the first things we found is improved access. This is primarily, this is a little bit of, when I say 95% of the people are provided access to the new system, it's a lot because of the fact that we are treating the parking ride laws as they should higher catchment VHS, because now you can have a better access to the transit than just walk access. So, providing that, we said, now we can actually increase the percentage of the people who can actually access the area, and we increased that significantly. One, through enhanced access, driver access, and the other one, because we increased the alignment, that's extend the alignment, et cetera. So, we did an analysis where we said 75% have access in the base case. So, with the demographic shifts, which was seen from center to outside to the jobs and population, what it shows is, you know, when you go outside, what happens? The density also then reduces. We see that from the 75, it comes down to 69 or 68 if we actually don't do anything. Service extensions actually increases a lot more, and these are very targeted because you are actually moving from the center to the outside. So, the two things, it improves, so what does better service efficiency and the level of service do? There are two basic impacts of any transportation improvement, right? One is, it improves utility to current users. The current usage of the system, it improves the utility. So, in public transportation, one of the things is, when public transportation is built, essentially to serve people who are very transit-dependent, most of the time, that low income mobility is actually one of the key drivers. It is, it is very, it's a global thing, that if, if access to transportation is not there, the thing, the activity or the aspect of life that is the biggest is education. People forego trips related to education. People forego trips related to health and work, in that order. It's a global thing everywhere, from Sub-Saharan Africa to Europe to USA, it happens. If there is a low-income person or transit-dependent person that doesn't access transit, the first part that suffers is kids in school or educational training, things of that sort. So, we made an estimate, actually, the report is given, the sort of estimate of foregone trips by purpose. The, so here, improving utility to current users essentially gives them access to more opportunities. Providing viable opportunistic users are people who come in, people who are not necessarily just transit-dependent, but people who can actually access more opportunities through additional mode of transportation. So, both these things essentially contribute to increasing sort of use of the system, utilization of the system in terms of the night issue. So, at this point, we'll go into the accountant's viewpoint of that. Let me ask you, any questions on the overall system and the comparison with the peer group?
Just a comment, seeing like you had a slide up there, it shows cost per hour of after, of transfers outside.
Yeah.
And then you switch to the next chart, showed something about maybe increasing frequency of routes or having, would that increase then?
No, one was in the fare recovery, the other one was the cost. The cost, the cost, the outlook. So, one was revenue, the other one was cost.
But I think it's true of later, you know, if we, if we currently run 15-minute service, and we increase that to 12-minute service.
Right.
Then our cost, in terms of comparison to other cities, would go up.
Right. It will.
But I'm not so sure in increasing that frequency is only going to improve our revenue stream, that's my point. It strikes me, Mark can be certainly expert in this, but it is not a balancing act between frequency of service enough that people can depend upon us for uses, but not so often that every five minutes they can walk out of their house or there's a bus coming by. It's ankle.
So, that is a lot diminishing margin of returns at some point.
You learn quite a bit. The years you've been on the board. I've watched him since he went to first.
So, there is that diminishing.
He knew bond division before he got on the board.
Which is true, absolutely true. I mean, in terms of, which is why it is important to enter into the strategic plan to see what it costs, and an overall analysis to see, why should actually the service be that much? What if it is less? Where does actually the benefit cost analysis take? I mean, that's a whole idea of the overall impact. I think that's a valid point. So, now, the capital, we'll go into the improvements that were done, right? That, in fact, 10% went back. So, we divided them into the capital expenses that are incurred, which are essentially for upgrades, buying vehicles, et cetera, that's what, and annual costs that are incurred. So, for the sake of analysis, what we did was to do everything in concentrated dollars. So, it's a real analysis, real monetary analysis in terms of $20, $12. And we said, let's not take inflation into that or the situation that's been up and apply a discount if required. So, so here, the three primary capital expense categories are the upgrade of the vehicles. And many of the vehicles are actually aging. Some of them are in the, you know, 80% service level, and some of them are actually going towards the last 5% service level. So, there is a, there's a schedule which has been set up for improvement of, for upgrade of vehicles. And the cost, based on some of the things that we obtained from the National Transit Database and its costs, you know, this comes to $159 million is what actually the cost would be for replacing all those vehicles. Now, this is the wrong cost of that. It doesn't include any of the grants that we can get. That includes as a, as an income, which we can use it against that. But so, it's $159 million over the next 20 years. The focus corridor improvements, which are essentially improves the frequency of the system in terms of the headways, reduced headways. So, that increases the revenue hours of travel, which means the cost goes, money goes up. And the upgrades, the signal prioritization and some of the station upgrades and all that. These cost unit costs put together comes to about a little more than $12 million. And this is, these $12 million are actually in the first few years when the focus started. That's not stretched over the many years. The driver access improvements, what we did was to actually take sort of an average. cost that we see in terms of the parking ride, parking ride lot construction, ultimately the cost for land acquisition and construction, and took a sort of a reasonable number there and applied it. This, this again, expected in the first six years, that, you know, as a schedule, we have set up a schedule for that and said, this is how it's going to be extended. The annual expenses on the focus corridor, because of the increased service frequency, what we see is that annual cost, say, two and a half million dollars a year is what the cost increase is going to be. That translates to about fourteen million over the study period that we did. Service improvements for the other vehicles are expected to result, sort of, you know, additional cost of another, a little, a little more than a million and a half on the basis of change in revenue hours again. It's basically the change in revenue hours and the cost per revenue hour, which was calculated based on national plans of database estimates. So we essentially looked at national plans of database and, and looked at some of the, you know, the price indexes of areas and said, this is probably a good estimate to take. Now, there, there is a, some of the improvements actually are converting the electric, sorry, the diesel vehicles to, to a mode. And that actually will increase, sort of, or reduce the cost. It, it provides some savings. Primarily, the savings that we calculated here is only the propulsion cost in terms of the fuel cost, the diesel fuel. And we did not actually take too much of escalation to consolidation. What we did was, we have, you know, different commodity prices, could you, using that, took that, annual electricity prices and said, okay, so certain percentage of the, of the clips are actually probably on electricity, the rest is again on fuel. So how much of savings can we get? And overall, the savings is actually roughly fourteen million dollars over the study period. So overall impact is, so the other one fifty-nine plus all that is sixty-four million over the analysis period is what increase in cost share. And this expense, if you will get it, it's distributed this way for two-thirds of the expenses in the procurement of the vehicles. But one, one should remember that this, these vehicle costs are definitely supported by grants, but, but that's, that's where the original capital cost distribution is. And, you know, there's a, drive access is fairly small service improvements, that, that's probably the next one, which is around a little more than a quarter. Now, so that was the cost side of the equation. Now we said, let's take the revenue side. What we did here was, we said, increase from seventy-five percent access to ninety-five percent access, some are drive access. We essentially used the mode share. We didn't do a detailed travel demand model. We said, let's take a conservative view. We would say, if the access provided, the mode share is going to be the same. Let's assume the same type of mode share and says, what kind of ridership increase is expected? And we, we should remember, what we are doing is just solely attributable to the improvements that are, what we are talking about. So it doesn't take into account the population growth, it doesn't take into account anything else. We say, let's isolate it, sort of a partial differential, if you will, isolate it to just the improvement we make. What is its direct impact on the increase in ridership? And if that increase in ridership happens, keep that dollar average fare per trip and say, how much do we actually make in terms of additional revenues? So the next one, that, that comes to about three-fourths of a million dollars a year. The next one is actually a little bit of an economic reasoning. What, when public transportation systems or any of the transportation improvements are put in place, what it does is, if it, if it creates more activity, it effectively creates a consumer surplus. Which is why people choose something, people switch behaviors because there's a consumer surplus created. And this consumer surplus, we calculated and said, a consumer surplus essentially acts like an income shock or a residual, additional residual income that comes in. So we don't take all the safety and other benefits. We essentially take the travel time savings and things of that sort and say, how much does actually, how much do people actually save in terms of out of pocket? Now, these, when you do a consumer surplus, the different income groups have different sort of proclivity of spending their additional dollars. So people at the low income levels tend to spend eighty-seven percent of that additional dollar. People at the higher income probably spend only twenty percent. So the, that distribution, we essentially took from Euroeconomic Affairs and applied it at a T A C level. So this is the ridership that we create and we said, this is the consumer surplus and applied it, we said, this is what it is. It would have been great if it was a big number, but unfortunately, but, but, but since it's a comprehensive analysis, we put the number in there, it's a, it's a very small increase in terms of regional consumption increase. And regional consumption increase has an impact on sales tax revenues because fifty-five percent of the agency's revenues are from sales tax. So, so we said, that's, that's something to consider. Now, if we can actually create systems and improve things which actually create a better consumer surplus, we actually have sales tax impacting, which in a, in a real financial analysis, you should take that into account because it's a real potential income that comes in. Then the grants, we said, you know, the hybrid vehicles, about eighty-three percent, so local math's only seventeen percent, the others, local math is twenty percent. We use that to come up with that kind of a grant that we can get. So here's a summary of expenses. So rather than going through each line, including the savings and, and all that, we are talking about two-hundred-and-forty million dollars over the study period, which is the overall outlay. And the summary of revenues is one-hundred-and-twenty-five million over the period, all in twenty-two dollars, that comes to twenty-two dollars. So that math is fairly clear there. It's a deficit of a hundred-and-fifty million dollars. And this is, if we look at it in an annualized way, so the annualized deficit comes to what's this, a half million dollars a year, kind of that is. So if you were to fund something in an ongoing basis, it's a half million dollars a year is what we have to fund. That is, that is what essentially results. Now, caveats in any economic code, as caveats are important, which is the economic environment, which is the way the cost, gas or oil price, all that can impact our estimate of any of the deficits. Regional growth trends, and if it grows up, it, it's a completely different estimates, it can actually change. Development trends, such as investment jobs, and all that can change. So, so many of these things we held constant, primarily, the, the generally accepted trends, but those things can change and it can, it can affect that. So one of the key things is to actually maintain a, a sort of a monitoring approach, if you will, to find out what's going on and be able to leverage that. Now, th, this was the, the business case part of it. Now we said, okay, so what does public transportation actually do for the region? Rather than go through a detailed benefit cost analysis model, here's a summary. In fact, in the report, we have actually given sort of flow charts of how each of these benefit categories are measured. Overall, the economic benefits, out of pocket savings for people, travel time savings, which are essentially the how much, you know, for, for different categories of people, different trip purposes, the travel time savings and the value of time that is used for that. The safety benefits, which is essentially calculated in terms of the like, reduced likelihood of crashes and accidents and things of that sort, which has, in the long run, shown that at a regional level, it has impacts on insurance costs and overall vehicle maintenance costs. Sustainability benefits, which are essentially the reduced emissions, all that, which actually it's a regional benefit which comes in. So overall economic benefit wise, to calculate, when we put it together, the economic benefits to the region, the, the R T A system generates about more than fifty million dollars in economic benefits to the region in terms of all this, particularly in terms of, you know, the low, low, low income of, so, so low income mobility is one of the key drivers of that, the cost savings for them to travel. And cost savings also account for the increased opportunity for travel, that is, you know, the fact that we have avoided a foregone trip. So there is a, the indifference for doing that is what is used at in terms of valuing the trip. So if you were to think in terms of trips, we, we are, we are talking about benefit per trip is more than six dollars. Now we had to remember one thing, the benefits are accrued to the society as a whole, the sustainability benefits, safety benefits, this is, everybody benefits from that, not just the transit passenger. So to, to normalize it to the system usage level, every person who takes a trip, takes a transit trip, every trip that is made essentially generates six, six dollars annual benefit is what it essentially comes down to. If you were to break it down into your investment returns, it's a, every dollar investment brings back a dollar per year in terms of annual benefits. That, that's, that's what the benefits analysis shows. There, there's a, there's a part which is, you know, recently, the benefit cost analysis changed its, the overall format a little bit. Earlier, we used to take all this and then add employment created, the wages and the taxes from wages and all that, in addition to that, which was, the general notion was four to five was the general benefit cost ratio of transit investments. So recent guidance from the D O T is that many of those things might be double counted, so keep them separate. Economic impacts, because wages and jobs created, are separate from direct benefits that are created to the region. Because some of these things happen because of the benefits. The fact that there are travel time savings is probably why some jobs are created. And that was the argument. So which is why the benefit cost ratios these days are more, so the title grants were specified this way of calculating the benefit cost ratios. So at this point, we said, there is a deficit, there are economic benefits that are there. Now, the, the, the key part then, from a strategic standpoint, is how do we capture the value these benefits bring in? And there are different ways, different agencies around the country have tried different things and tried, some have sustained, and there's a list of those things which have been accomplished, sort of thinking outside the fair box, if you will. What, what is the way to generate? Many of these things, you know, other than sort of, you know, railroad rehabilitation, most of these are things that can be considered. I mean, Ohio has a, one of the things is state infrastructure bank. Ohio is a state infrastructure bank. Ninety percent, I think, of the infrastructure bank spending has been on highways. Two and a half percent of the spend has, probably know the numbers better, I, I caught the numbers from sort of reports. Now, for any of these financially innovative financing schemes to actually work, the economic benefits that is at base in the sense of what does it do for the region? And which is where an economic benefits analysis essentially drives the strategy for the, the financial strategy. So that kind of sums up my analysis. If you have any questions.
That rail rehabilitation. Could that be related to fixed dive ways or?
It could be, it could be, but it's F R A's, it is completely sponsored by F R A. So it's dive ways, yeah, I mean, it could, it could be leveraged there. And, and some of the, you know, the, the public-private partnerships these days are getting, there are interesting models, for instance, Chicago Transit Authority, Citibank came up with a very interesting model for Chicago Transit, saying they'll repair all the stations in return for using Citibank Visa Card as a fare card, an exclusive for a year, which is a very interesting model.
That's right.
But, but the problem is Chase will come with a counterproposal, so it doesn't actually work out that easy. So, so I mean, these are very, particularly, you know, Citibank benefits from getting into Chicago because it's a Chase country. So, and, and this is, having a transit commuter trip is a huge value. Their research showed apparently that a, a one-week commuter, free commuter trips on a card is equal into giving a thousand airline miles. With a thousand airline miles, you don't get anything. The other one, you get immediately, the immediate advantage. So there are some interesting opportunities to pursue.
Are there any other questions for V J? You know, we didn't go through the specifics. Here's what we suggest as the phasing of the service concept components, which could always be shifted around. There's a lot of the focus quarters, which is the fifteen-minute service. The suggestion at this point was that that be one of the earlier things implemented. You know, one of the things that R T A was clear on telling us at the outset of the project is that, as an agency, has worked very hard to get, you know, given the, the slam of, of the recession that this agency and all other transit agencies faced a couple of years ago, is now on firm footing. That financial fiscal stability is paramount to the system. And we understood that, that while within the context of looking at the future and how to serve new areas and such, that by its nature, that's going to be an increase of service and therefore an increase of costs. We didn't recommend things like rail or bus rapid transit and such, but some significant improvement over the course of the twenty years. And obviously, you know, the current funding mechanisms support what you have today. And, but, you know, in terms of looking at the future, those are, you know, some good questions and some challenges obviously that the agency faces. So, you know, we, you know, do we have the opportunity? We can have some follow-up a little bit later on in terms of, I know it's a lot of data to digest, a lot of numbers, but we want to make sure that we took a look at it from a very sound fiscal point of view in terms of, yes, oh, you know, these are what the costs are going to be to do all of these concepts. And then from an economic benefit point of view, though, here's what that would generate as well.
Right. And, and the scheduling is important because what happens is, based on how it is done, when we evaluate different alternatives, we are including the cost of capital, for instance, you know, how much does it actually cost by going on any of these rocks or? And, and that's what actually determines, you know, when do you actually schedule something? So sometimes you don't want to get in a huge deficit one year, you can actually even it out, things of that sort. So that's where the strategic plan comes in.
So to give one example, when we talked about earlier on the service plan, you know, the color-coded lines, do all of them need to be done at once? No, I mean, they can't in terms of the vehicles, but that's something that can be phased.
Right.
Again, well, thanks, V J.
Thanks for your heroic efforts of getting here.
Yeah. You're going to hit the wall, it's in fact, today. I want to give just one more slide there, just to, to add that. Bill Burgess and Ellen Belcher are here from Burgess and Burgess, and they were tasked with doing some community research. I'd like to spend a few minutes from Bill to talk about some of the things that he learned as they went into the community, starting last fall. Bill?
I'm going to break some rules, I'm not going to stand up. I have a bunch of points I have in my power. And my life is future revenue gaps, as many of you know. So I, I'm going to try to do this as a common sense discussion. If you give me five or six minutes, I'll go through it and you can ask some questions. Our, our company works all over Ohio, a lot of work in Southwest Ohio. Certainly Ellen is, is here full-time, although I wish I could get a word for us on time. And, and I'm here a couple of days a week for a long, it's been that way a long time. We also have done enormous amounts of transit work and transportation work with airlines, railroads, as well as many transit authorities. What I want to do, I know what it says, that this is about future revenues. Future revenues are all about context and positioning and how you interact with your community as a, as in a symbolic sort of way and in a service point sort of way. And what we did to, to take a look at that, excuse me, because unless that interaction's positive, there won't be anything to support growth because you can bring in all anyone from the outside and have no riders, because that's the other part of it. You know, the, the support manifests itself in two ways. One is loyalty and the other is use. What we did was talk to thirty community leaders. We looked at much of the same kind of demographic data and other things, and we did a statistically valid survey with Triad Research of four-hundred Triad Research of four hundred registered voters. Why do we use voters and not residents? A, they're the only people who answer the phone. B, many of them won't, you've got to statistically adjust the sample. C, how many of you know somebody who lives here who does not have a nine-three-seven area code? Or how many of you know somebody who lives somewhere else who has a nine-three-seven area code? The fact that they are voters grounds them here. We know they are here, according to the contrarian understanding. So, so we, and the other, the other reason we looked at a lot of data and tried to bring some of our transit experience to bear on this, and I am a vet in person, is that this is all, talking about revenue projections and future services is all about trying to understand probability and know one piece of research, and particularly not now, the old saw of the statistically relevant, you know, reliable survey lines that up, it's one piece of data in one minute upon, and you've got to look at a lot of it. So what I wanted to do is start by talking about the leaders interviews, and we talked to mayors, managers, human service professionals, and other community leaders, thirty of them. Our companies work here so long, some of you are probably on these panels, we have very good panels of people in Montgomery County who have agreed to talk to us over time, and we don't pay them, and some of them are leaders and some of them are grassroots types, and some of them are business people, I guess that makes them all leaders, and we had a good diversity here, and we're trying to find out how they think. These are open-ended questions, it's a half an hour on the phone or so, some of you have been interviewed in other projects, Janice on their head, and, and I can pretty much sum this up in about five statements. Leaders have a positive impression of GDRTA. Mark still out of the room? Stay out of the room! They actually like him. And they find him to be a strong leader, they find him to be collaborative, which somebody said to me last night is an unnatural act, and I'm still trying to figure that out, but the guy was running a hospital, so he must know something. And they find you guys to be responsive, down to simple things like, you don't get somebody else when you get Mark's voicemail. I mean, people comment about things like that. They also say, and some of what Charlie pointed out, reinforces this, that you're, that you can be a pretty good partner, and I've got some personal experience with human service agencies on how good a partner you can actually be if you push the, I'm thinking about Lake County, if you push, if you push the needle, if it's needed. So they have a positive impression of your organization, they know what it means to the economy, they have a different kind of impression of your riders, and I heard it a lot today, and frankly, it's troublesome whenever I hear it, because if you want to keep acting like you're, if an agency wants to keep acting like it's acting and being what it's being, no matter how efficient it is using all the best practices in the world, but there's a point at which you've got to jump outside of yourself. And when we hear community leaders also say what transit professionals say, you know, they're either old or they need paratransit, they're young or they're urban, yeah, some of them are going to work, and that is not the kind of thing that you can use to advance your cause to the point where, I'm sorry, I'm an expert in filling future revenue gaps, Mr. Hoagie, right? Guess what? There's a great line from Chorus Line, "That ain't it, kid." And so we've got to start to think about whether we're reinforcing what people, what leaders think about us, talk about normal people in a second. They would love to see what you just saw, the constant revaluation, what's the economic modeling, what's the implications with other agencies, what's the implications for regional trending? They constantly said to us, why aren't they doing more of this? Now, they say in a kind of accountability-oriented way, you know, it's not all empty bus syndrome, but some of that's there, how do they use their money, nobody knows how any county agency uses their money, ever, you know, nobody, that means they're classic forty percent. And so they would love that you're doing this, the community leadership, and you should do something with them, there are a number of people in the interviews, and Ellen will comment, but, oh, they're doing that, thank you for asking, da-da-da-da-da. Now, so in terms of planning and accountability, this would please the community leadership greatly, and somehow there should be an eight or ten-minute packaging of this that goes on the road, goes on the web, sort of becomes a podcast, you know, the Donahue Dimesworth or whatever, but people would like to hear this. Finally, they don't want, they don't think a tax is a very good idea, talking about community leadership. Look, it's not like I've seen in a lot of other places where, okay, let's defend taking it away, kill ourselves for seven or eight years and maybe get a partnership with somebody who has some authority or some revenue, but the community leadership's not comfortable without just going right to that. A lot of the sources that VJ was, was just, they would be thrilled to know that that's us being investigated. Some of the partnerships Charlie was talking about would have great appeal. However, I mean, let's just be real about this, yes, there is some elasticity in some of those budgets, yes, there is some availability in some of those dollars, the broader issue of funding something like this over the long run still comes down to positioning and building yourself as really not just a very important service, but a very important part of the future, and that's the difference, and the public gets that. So now I want to turn to the poll review, excuse me, today let's go with a survey. Like the community leaders, they are very positive about GDRTA. Could they be stronger? Yeah, I'll give you an example. We asked about four different organizations, just how important they are to the community. GDRTA came in as a tie for third, but before anybody writes that down or uses it as the soundbite, it was what you call at the track, a very good third. Sinclair was far and away ninety percent, excuse me, eighty-eight percent felt Sinclair was very important. Next on the intent, well, Jan, I mean, next on the intensity scale is Hoagie, all right? In the mid-sixties, mid-sixties felt, excuse me, mid-fifties felt that, no, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the wrong column here, sixty-three percent felt that humans, the various human services offered by the county, and that's sort of how you had to group them, so I'm not even sure they knew what we were talking about, if we'd been able to be, if we'd said child protection, it would have gone to one hundred and twelve, but they thought that was very important. You guys are third, fifty-seven percent, very important, another twenty-some percent important, just, so you're at about eighty, just like the county behind Sinclair, and you're tied with Five Rivers. I would say that in any, I would say that in any major metropolitan area, being in a tie for importance with a solid metro park district is good performance. Another thing, I wish Donahue would leave, because twenty-eight percent said in the last five years, things have gotten better, and about forty-five percent said they're the same. For the public to even know that much, to notice it, and to, with all of the prejudices that exist about transit, for them to say that is very important, but there's a but, they're concerned about empty buses, and there is this, you know, there's this question we always ask in public services, it's the it's for you test, is it for you? We don't pass that test yet. Only, and on the other hand, and let me just give you that statistic, I'm trying to not do too many statistics, but about half the people said that somebody in their family used transit, Mr. President, or somebody they know used transit regularly. When we sorted that out, there was a pretty even split, about half the people or someone in their family had used for, used transit once in the last year, excuse me, a quarter, and another quarter, half of the half, said they knew somebody who used it regularly. Is that terrible? No, not at all. Half the people say they've attended Sinclair, if half the people use the metro parks every three or four months, it would be surprising, it's a good base for moving forward. This is not like the worst disease you could have, okay? It's a promising start, and they like your services. Ninety percent supported, and I'm rounding off here, I'm taking the two of them together, ninety percent felt that the paratransit and the special services for seniors were either extremely or very important. Eighty-seven percent, excuse me, eighty percent felt regular bus services were very important. By the way, a little caveat, just for my own petification, I tested fixed route bus services, same thing, right? Sixty-seven percent, get that out of your vocabulary. Fixed, I mean, it's a fifth less, just on the terminology. Less so were the park and ride and trolley, but when I added in the people who sort of somewhat support those, as well as the extremely and very, there's very strong majorities. There's nothing you're doing people don't like, there's a distance from them, though. I want to, I want to talk about revenue for a second, because all the things that we've talked about, you know, the good quality rating, you know, I don't think I said this, but your job rating is two-to-one positive, fifty-six, twenty-four, if you're a politician, they run against you. Your use of tax money, especially politicians who've been around as long as you are, use of tax money, three-to-one, sixty, twenty, that is an outstanding rating for a public agency, an outstanding rating, and I'm trying to think, I don't think there's a major agency in this town that I haven't over time seen those things on in the last few years. People regard what you're doing well, there's a good base. Are you part of the future? You have an opportunity to be. As I said, revenues. We asked, we asked people whether or not public transit should go anywhere it's needed, even outside the county. Fifty-nine percent said yes. Not bad. We've seen that in other organizations, as Sinclair's extended outside the county, we've always tried to monitor that, because that's a sensitivity, you're paying the tax, right? And that's a pretty good rate. Only fourteen percent put the polar opposite of that, they shouldn't have services at So then you're dealing with eighty-five percent of that, eighty-six percent's less, and how do they break that? Well, about twenty-five percent said some of the things that we've heard here today. You know what? I'll say it in a straighter way, you've got to look at reallocating, how you're using the money you're using and providing the services you're providing, that's got to be part of the plan for the future. That's what a lot of those ninety slides mean, or some of them mean, to me, as a layperson. Another quarter said raise fares. I'm not saying any of these are viable options to meeting a financial gap. Another quarter said raise taxes, so now we're up to seventy-five, we've got ten or eleven left, and they say they don't know. So we never said, and I want to be ultra-clear on this, we never said, if GDRTA was to put a sales tax in front of the people, how would they vote? That was not the intent of this. We were trying to get a sense, given all of these kinds of options that you all have going down the line, I thought they were outlined exceptionally well on both transformation and finance ends, we were trying to see simply what's, what's the appetite here. Now, how would you build that? Well, there's, and how would you build support, and how would you build, how do you become part of the future? There's some very good numbers in here that are really down-home kind of things, and there's not a soul in this community that won't understand how they work. So that was my demographic interview. Ninety percent of the people supported the senior services and the disability-oriented services, just talk about that. Eighty-four percent think that an important reason to have a strong GDRTA is environmental. That number is bouncing back up over the, my God, twenty-five, twenty-six years we've been involved in transit work. Obviously, in the late eighties and early nineties, that was a big, big deal. It's starting to bounce back up. When Ellen took an independent look at all this, her statement was, that's got power. When we stop, when we don't talk about, when we talk about helping this region and this county keep and attract jobs, eighty percent say that's a strong, that's a very good reason to have a strong GDRTA. Last, and now I'm going to do what somebody did before, I think it was you, I'm going to loop back. Anybody here getting younger? Frank, you said it too? Is anybody here getting younger? Eighty-six percent say I'm going to need it someday. Me. So what does that mean to me? What's all this mean to me? As I think about what these data, what the demographics of the community, what the challenges that we certainly see on the ground here constantly, and now long enough to have a trend in our head, and by the way, anything that was inconsistent with other data that I've seen a whole bunch of places, it's grown out, so there's no one hit wonders in here. I see enough on this, in this community that I don't need to worry about. Boy, that's weird, I'll tell Mark about that privately, and maybe he's got some explanation for it, but at this point, it's above my head. There's some hard dissat, if you take the old social psychological theory that dissatisfers beat satisfers every time, right, you can't walk up to hell if you've got stones in both shoes, there's a couple of things you have to do. We've got to, in the words of Ellen Belcher, and those words have meant a lot in this town for a long time, get ahead of the empty bus problem. We can't be chasing it, we have to get ahead of it. The drive for customer service has to go beyond a drive for customer service, it has to become a drive for customer attraction and loyalty. I'm not saying you're not doing these things in a transit sort of way. When I think about building transportation, I think about my fourteen years for Conrail and my nine years with Continental, and things like that, just think about, that's not outside the box, it's in the transportation box, and I think about how people sell cars. We've got to also get ahead of this, I don't use it. And I think there's a potential there. If I told you that I have this product and twenty-five percent of the people in a major metropolitan area use it, you'd say, man, who'd do it? I mean, why do you have people who can sell it for you? But when it comes to that usage number, combined with the empty bus thing, combined with the correct or incorrect sense that it's for, I'm not going to categorize, it's for the kinds of groups and kinds of purposes that I talked about before, and when we ask people open-ended, an open-ended question about who used it, you can't afford a car, you're sort of working class, you're low income, you're going, you're young, they use the word disabled, because nobody can figure out how else to say it to you, and they use the word old, and that's how those things can conglomerate. Well, that's a lot of people, and it's a lot of people we know, but it might still not be you. So we think you've got to get ahead of those three things, the I don't use it, which relates to the drive for loyalty, which will fix the trans, which will begin to fix the empty bus problem, and you heard lots of suggestions on how to deal with some of the things like that today. But then there's the satisfiers part, the vision part, the part that, you know, I once had a boss, smart, smart guy, unstable, but smart. He used to always say, maybe I just wasn't as smart, he always used to... He always used to say, "Bill, you have to take this thing to the next level. Best practices mean you're gonna be doing the same thing better." You've gotta figure out a new sense of meaning. And we believe that these data say that to get to the point where local revenue is a strong attraction, that my old boss was right, on three counts. I've said what they are before. This is about jobs for the, for our economic future. It's not about just getting people to work. It's not about the ride, it's about, you know, you talked about what's in it for all of us. Trust me, you can't sell it when somebody else gets on a bus, I'm six bucks better. But I can sell jobs for the future. Second is hipper, greener, cooler, more contemporary. The conversation at the outset about downtown was kind of interesting. Who you want to live here? You know, when you look at the MCO future goals on a better educated population, you can't home-grow them. But any community that's done that, they're important. And they're younger, and they're coming to jobs, and they're coming to lifestyles, and they're coming to a more progressive, to a progressive field. And the last thing is that ain't none of us getting any younger. And we've all worked hard for this to be there for us. And it should be there for you, too. So be there for jobs, be there for the right kind of growth, and be there when you need it. I'm not a student for many, many years. I mean, I haven't sat on the corner and watched GDPR TA marketing over the ten or eleven years I've been here. And I fully accept that it's possible that a lot of your messaging hits those points. But when thought about as part of the future of the community, you will begin to get to the point where an investment becomes more likely. I was gonna say more possible, but, I mean, anything can happen. And by becoming viewed as part of the future of the community, you will implicitly overcome a whole bunch of the prejudices that stop people from getting on the bus right now. So that's kinda, you know, I'm sorry to break the rules, I did have a PowerPoint. I was making a lot of notes as we were talking, though, because these guys are making some good points, and that's how I think this relates to it. I'll be happy to take any questions, we're on most Wednesdays and Thursdays. Janet, those were...
Bill, as we go on and address your suggestions and see how we can implement the thoughts you've laid out, how important do you think it might be for us to educate the public on the true economics of transportation? My understanding is, or my perception is, most people believe when they pay a fare, they cover the cost of transportation. They have no idea between the difference between the gap of what it does cost versus what they're paying, nor do they have an idea of how much money is needed to take care of, even the capital improvements, as it was spelled out.
Well, your college alumni office wouldn't let you make that mistake, would they?
No.
They wouldn't let you make that mistake from the first moment you set foot on campus. I think it's very important. Sinclair, you know, full disclosure, longtime client, but long before I got there, you'd answer the phone at Sinclair, and you'd be on hold, and what would it say, Janet? That the Sinclair levee underwrites the lowest tuition in Ohio. And many community colleges, and I'm not talking about the high-priced grad students, many community colleges, which feel, the Venn diagram has some significant overlap, many of them show you, and Sinclair used to be the best at this, I'm not sure if we stopped doing it, show you in the bill how much the taxpayers have written down. So, I think that you can come at it very practically and say that agencies that have a really strong tie to the future of the community in the community's mind, not that yours is bad, have constantly reminded people that there's an investment. I get worried when people forget they're paying the tax, for the exact reason you're talking about. There's another point that you can make, too. And that's, you know, whoever said ninety percent of all your communications money ought to be spent internally, meeting with your customers and your staff and your, there was something to that, it's just it's been repeated so many times. And it's because nobody cares more about you than the people who work here and the people who ride here. They need to know, somebody was using the word about educating how to use the bus, I'm sorry for that, but they need to understand how it's getting paid for, too.
You'd be surprised at how many people, stakeholders, and the people who are involved in the community, they think the money comes from the feds. They, and the sales tax was way down the list.
Oh yeah, you might as well be a housing authority in terms of that. It's federal money.
But these were people who were involved in the community, and you probably consulted when you, you know, asked for those tax, and you sort of thought they remembered, but it was amazing.
You know, a couple of points you brought up, though, I think are important. And Ellen was saying about the empty bus center. We do talk about that all the time, and I'm not so sure that we're really attacking it as much as just talking about it. I mean, it's one thing to sit around in committee meetings and talk about it as opposed to getting the plan.
Well, I would...
Because I agree, I think it's very important. If you go out here and ask anybody, part of the reason is, people work by hours in the daytime, and that's when we haul them as passengers. In the evening, when they're not working, that's when they see buses, quite often very out in the suburbs on the weekend, when not near as many people ride the bus, we have limited schedules. So, you know, they're going with their senses, what they see, and they're seeing buses, not a lot of people. And they're correct when they see them, but they don't see them when they're standing room only.
I am really glad to hear you say that, and interested, would be interested what other people would think in a longer conversation, because I can never tell who's blaming the victim when the empty bus conversation goes up. But I'm gonna tell you what, the discussions you're talking about, Mr. President, at this point are commiseration, and people are almost a nerd to it. It is going to take a different view of what a transit organization can mean to the future of the community. An economic development organization, an organization that's gonna help you in the eight to ten years of your life, and I fully expect it to happen to me, when I'll no longer be able to drive, if I'm lucky. An organization that's gonna make it possible that our children might wanna come here because it's cool and convenient, and we don't, you know, these guys get mad at me, say, "Oh, it's hard to get somebody to somewhere when there's urban sprawl." I'm sorry, that's your job. I mean, you look at every psychographic on that twenty to thirty-five generation, there's no sympathy. They want you to get it done. And, boy, we found that in MCO Future, that that's as live and well here as it can be, and thank God for Joe Cuss and the commissioners there on it, and they're putting resources into it, and they're involved. But problems like that, Jim, I think, come out sometimes of a sense of, we are, and, you know, I don't know this organization to know whether it's a limit on this organization, but this organization could very easily say, "We do what we do as well as anybody certainly in Ohio." I mean, my friends in the transit industry, whether they're in Cleveland...
They can't do it there.
It doesn't mean you're doing, it doesn't mean that your view of what you're doing is enough to take care of the future, which is what these guys are calling it.
Well, that's the issue.
It's a mindset.
Another issue which you brought up, that's why I mentioned it's a time to, Choice Passenger.
Say, Choice Passenger.
We don't do enough advertising, enough effort going after the choice passenger, who has a choice between driving a very nice car to work, or has a choice to take the public transit. And there's some truth, by the way, when you say the perception is out there that we're hauling people who are basically pretty much lower economic because they can't afford a car, or only one car for family, and they, you know, one or two has to spend on other traffic, we're hauling older people. It's because, as I mentioned before, I think we need to do way more effort to attract these people who do have options. We've not done a good job, I don't think, in terms of selling these folks out.
It may not just be selling, Mr. President, it may also be serving. And I think some of the things that Charlie was talking about may have some, may have some impact there, but you are correct. All I'm saying is, I think you may have to try to rethink how important this organization can be for the community's future, and how it can be important to figure out how that communication takes place. Because social marketing in this place can carry individual marketing for it. Mark my words, you will not get there without a boat. Just telling people to ride the bus more is just gonna get, it could in some ways make the problem worse.
Well, one of the things, I think the first presenter, as you mentioned about the dual move, bus options we will have, maybe come online, which we hopefully have first year next year, and that will give us option perhaps to modify several routes and go to some of these areas which are in the current system. We could do it, but cost benefit, it just, frankly, wouldn't be worth it in the current system.
Yes.
I think it holds great potential.
Bill, did you find any statistically significant differences in the responses to the questions that were asked, including those who did not ride public transportation versus those who either drove public, or no?
Riders are better.
Riders are better.
Yeah, I mean, that's the best summary. I'd be happy to go through cross tabs or a few, or have Kathy give you a call or whatever. But riders are better across the board.
Well, having said that, then that would indicate that we are doing something right.
I think you do a lot of this.
For the people that are riding us.
Oh, yeah.
And from my initial reviewing of this data before we came, I, my opinion is, listen to me personally, I feel like we have an issue to deal with, and it's selling our value, selling the value that we are, and I just, I whispered something to Mark about that while this was going on, that, you know, we have, we have, and I think, a very good agency, and we do our best to try and serve our...
Clearly, the public agrees with a lot of that.
Right. And the people that are riding us agree with me. We have to get to the point, and I don't know how to do it, but we have to get to the point that we sell ourselves on not only being available for the handicapped, the old, the whatever, the poor, that type of thing, and being an agency that can help us move forward.
Drive me, drive me, drive clean, and drive you when you need it.
Exactly. And, you know, as an example, if we want to attract somebody from a large city, say we wanted to attract a young person from New York who has plenty of public transportation available to them, and probably do not have a car, we've got to be able to get them around as almost as good as they can in New York.
Yeah, I would...
And so those are the kinds of things that I'm thinking we need to be...
Ms. Harrison, I think you're right, but I think you need to even kick it up one more level. You have to, I think you have to see yourself as, and I know Mark does, but we're a CEO sees, and we're an entire agency's mindset over time is, there's a lag, always is. And the public is, and the public acceptance of that often lags even further. To see your, that person has to see you, and they won't unless this community sees you, because nobody, when they come visit, will talk about it, as part of a better future. And I realize that sounds like, "How many levels did he just kick it up?", but I will guarantee you, you'll fill minimal gaps in this analysis without becoming that. And there's not a soul to my right that would disagree.
And I don't disagree with you. In fact, that's what I'm saying we need to do. The issue becomes how.
Yeah, well...
And you're dealing with, and we've got to realize that we're dealing with some of the things that you say, some prejudices, some empty buses ideas of what people see as empty buses, we gotta deal with that.
But you've got to, you start from a very strong point. You start from a very strong point. And I don't know that, I certainly don't know that this is an appropriate part of that conversation, but, I mean, Ellen and I, and other people who worked on this from our office, Mark, we're at your disposal if you'd like to have that conversation further. Because it's, it is a, there's a conceptual leap that will drive messaging in a different way, and then there's a commitment to not saying just what you want to say in your terms, but understanding that your position depends on what people feel and think about you, which might or might not have much to do with what you say.
And I think you need to take credit for what you've accomplished.
Yeah, you start from a really strong base, that's our point here.
And I, you know, I'm conjecturing here, but I'm sure I'm right, I'll bet my first born, that was the one that didn't give me any trouble. If you did this, had done this survey three years ago, you would have had the numbers that you did. So, I mean, you've got to see this as an evolutionary incremental thing. And I think in the marketing, I think it has to be, you don't, you want to tell what people, you want people to know what you're doing for them, but it can't be, "Feel sorry for us because we, you know, we're, you know, we're..."
Commiseration.
Yeah, that...
No, we're the victim, you're the victim, no!
That doesn't go anywhere.
That ain't it. It's a great song.
Yeah, you don't want to go further into the song.
So, you know, we think that there's, without being utterly tried, we think there's a light that you can shine here, and help some people follow you while you make some of these changes, and, but this community, like a lot of Ohio communities, is on a short leash, excuse me, is on a short-term scale. So, I would urge you to start thinking about repositioning, and obviously, everything that these folks said, because there was a lot of very interesting things that were said, but without a different view of the world, it may not be possible.
How do we go about identifying the potential of new customers, for example, that work downtown? Let me just give you one anecdote example, I think, example. In my profession, it is not uncommon that for two hours, you'll be at this point at a client, and then have to go from that client to this client, in the meantime, lugging wood, paper binders, and computers. So, it's almost impossible, using public transportation, to be able to accomplish that effectively.
It's almost impossible using fixed route, public transportation, and downtown that's relatively not dense. But if you expand your concept of how you think about density, first question, if you were my management consultant, like you were to people for years, you'd say to me, "You probably don't have enough buyers in that universe. Come up with a reasonable time." So maybe it's fifteen minutes outside of downtown. Now, how can we serve them? It's not gonna be fixed throughout still, because there's just not a big enough universe to deal with. So, in my view, some of the things that Charlie was saying about, and, you know what, I don't know every UMTA regulation, that's not, never my part. If you guys were all on your UMTA regulations and had all the money, we're not even here. So, but I know that you've got to find a way, where I'm gonna say to Hoagie, "You know what, you gotta go to, you gotta go downstairs, then you gotta go in a, especially if you're a woman, now you gotta go in a parking garage," which might or might not make you feel so good. Then you gotta get in your car, go park in another garage. Now you're at twenty-five minutes to go six blocks. What's it worth? I think those are some of the kinds of conversations, some of the conversations that Deb Norris is having with employers at Sinclair are some of the same kinds of conversations that you have to have, but it is not going to just be downtown. I don't believe, you guys are transit experts, I don't believe there's enough density downtown to support, to support more than a couple of, I mean, hotel vans are sketchy economics in this town.
I think there's two issues there, Mark. I mean, one is identifying the population, what portion of that population, you could have a reasonable expectation, we have a shot at, and then it goes back to, how do we provide what they need? And I think that could be anything from a shared bicycle, like we're seeing all over the country now, to, you know, what we do day to day. But I think that the front end is easier for us to do, there's simple things, like you could even start with the book of lists, you get them, the Business Journal or whoever, start identifying who is downtown. Actually, the partnership probably has the best resource on the core downtown of who has a business downtown, how many employees do they have, what do they do, what's that makeup? But then we've gotta go to this next step.
I'm gonna give you my gut.
What works for the different...
I'll give you my gut on this, and I feel pretty good about this, because it's one thing our company understands, it's metropolitan areas. I think you're going... I think you're going at least from North Fairfield to the county line that way, to above 70, to below 735, in figuring out a geography that has enough critical mass to fund even, I'm just going to, Charlie, I'm going to get this all wrong, but I'm going to take your example, to fund four or five smaller buses, smaller vehicles that could be moving. I just don't know, based on, you know, demographic and market work we've done with vet places, educational entities, you name it, I think you need that, I think that golden half million number means a lot. And it means a lot, and that, what I just described probably pushes you to six feet. And plus, with some real, real heavy end-use places in that. And, you know, once the van has security clearance, it's a little easier to believe that somebody's not carrying whatever you're carrying into a right path or any place that happens.
Well, Bill, I want to thank you for making-
Sorry to be so direct, by the way.
Making Frank and Charlie and I not the only ones in the room that are old enough to remember UMTA. UMTA is the old name for federal transit.
I told you, I told you, nobody would, nobody would hire us if we even had to think about that stuff.
I don't look old enough, but yes, I'm at UMTA, to the point where at an NPO that I worked at, the receptionist made a little pink slip when UMTA would call, would spell out that someone from U M P T A. But, you know, we've got a, the great foundation of the Transit Authority here is in this room, and is in this office, and is out at Longworth and some of the other locations there, that, you know, energy and spirit that we don't often see at transit authorities of any size. So, that's a lot of, you know, which, what Bill was talking about, that this agency is going for, has that foundation. So it's kind of building on that foundation. Sometimes you can't leap all the way up to get to what your desired end result is, but to build on that foundation.
But you better, you better make a big enough leap to know that that's where you're going. Otherwise, any bus will take you there.
So that's where we are with the strategic plan. Right now, we're in a draft report phase, and we'll be converting that to final very soon. And again, very much appreciate all the help and efforts that staff, the board, has provided us. You know, this has been a number of meetings that we've had talking about the project just in the last five or so months, and it's been our privilege and look forward to preparing and delivering the final product for you.
Just, obviously, the big question then is, what are the next steps? I think our plan, and this is the foundation, primarily for Frank's folks, where we go from here, we start considering the bits and pieces that are in the study, things we do next, and that'll be a process that'll come back through the staff and then back to the board committees, probably to Janet's committee, on some of these service-related issues, what we think we should do, can do, all those things. It's not something that's going to happen in the snap of a finger, but obviously it'll be the foundation for what we do.
Well, work in the future, and serve, but it'll be good.
And we're around for the next several minutes, so, you know, to have any one-on-one conversations, questions for a little while.
Why don't we do it that way? You said one-on-one, and before we adjourn, I want to thank the five of you. It's been a great presentation.
You know, we'll never turn down a phone call or an email.
Paralyzoid area.
As I say, it's been a great presentation. You went through stage, 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 you did know it all comes together. I mean, that's a market big presentation. So with that, I think we will adjourn, and we can end with a question, as I said, we are rousing.
Yep.
There again, since this is an important meeting, I will need a motion for adjournment.
You want to adjourn?
Second, do you like to announce it or do you-
You might make an announcement, I don't think the discussion is going to be as thorough. Okay. This morning, we received from the Federal Highway Administration their decision on the Beaver Creek issue. In short, Federal Highway has found that the lead organization has provided sufficient evidence to support its Title VI allegations that African-Americans have faced discriminatory impact as a result of the city's decision to deny RTA the application to install bus stops. We have the letter here, Federal Highway makes a series of recommendations, or four recommendations, that they anticipate action on within 90 days, with the potential threat that if they're not satisfied within 90 days, that the flow of Federal Highway lunch to the city could be stopped. So, it's a fantastic decision. If I look like I've really brightened up at one point to Mr. iPad, this is something we've been anticipating for a long time. I do have copies here for those in the room interested. I want to make sure the board saw it first, but I know Frank will be really excited about dusting off our application, because one of the recommendations is that they re-hear our original application without any additional criteria that Federal Highway has now, well, they support our position on that, Frank. We'll be excited about that. Just such good news. I've been waiting a long time. I thought Larry was sitting down. Larry's been on my case for years about these things, and-
Rightly so.
I couldn't be more happy. This is great, great.
It's a great trip.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Wow.
Hard work.
Let's hope this sets a precedent beyond Dayton as well, Dayton area as well.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Move to second to adjourn on favor of I.
Aye.
Those say to sign, the examiner.